Hello everyone and welcome to Clarksville's Political Forum. I'm Van Stokes, your moderator for today's session. And on behalf of Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville area Chamber of Commerce, we're delighted that you could join us here today. Today's forum is coming to you from the Customs House Museum and Cultural Center here in Clarksville. As usual, this forum is intended to provide you, the viewer, an informed choice when you go to the polls to vote for the candidate of your choice on November the 3rd. Today, we're going to have the opportunity to talk with the candidates who will be on the ballot for the Clarksville City Council representing Ward Number 5. To my left, they are Ms. Melissa Eldridge, Mr. Joey Dassinger, and Mr. Jason Knight. Now, in a minute, they will each have two minutes in which to present opening comments from their seats right here at the table. Following their opening remarks, we will then turn to our panelists for questions. Joining us again today, on my right, are our panelists, Mr. Jimmy Settle, Mr. Lee Erwin, and Mr. Jay Alberta. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question, and they will come in a rotating order. At the conclusion of the questioning, each candidate will then have two minutes to present closing remarks. Closing remarks will be presented in the reverse order of the opening comments. Our timekeeper for this session is Mr. Phil Harpel. The city council is comprised of 12 council members, each representing a different ward in the city. Members are elected to a four-year term. The city council votes on city ordinances and resolutions governing the city of Clarksville. It also approves the budget for the city and sets the city property tax rate. Council members approve changes to the city's policies, as well as those issues specified in the city code. The council is also responsible for adopting potentially far-reaching policies and ensuring that those policies are indeed followed, accountability being the name of the game. Each council member is appointed to serve on one or more committees as well. The issues they deal with include taxation, safety, and services to a growing community. That said, let's go to our candidates now for their opening comments. We will hear first from Ms. Melissa Eldridge.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. I also want to thank Leadership Clarksville, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, for having this public forum so that the citizens of Clarksville can make a good choice for their candidate for Ward 5. I also want to thank Mr. Stokes for outlining exactly what city council does. I've had so many people to ask me if we do anything for the school systems, and we do not, as you heard in his description of what city council oversees. I'm Melissa Eldridge. I am a native of Montgomery County. I have been a resident of Clarksville for 18 years. I am a United States Air Force veteran, as well as a small business owner which provides in-home care services to disabled veterans, as well as seniors. I decided to run for city council because some years ago, I noticed the speeding that was occurring in our neighborhood. And I emailed my city council person, as well as my county commissioner, and I received no response back from those individuals. And then the next day, I asked my brother Darwin, who I could possibly contact, and he told me the street department. And so I did, and they were able to pull up our neighborhood on Google Earth and was able to see that we did not have speed limit signs in our neighborhood. And so, at that time, they were able to come out the next day and install those signs. So I thought if it was such a simple task as to pick up the phone and just make a call and get the problem resolved, I could do that myself. And so that's why I've chosen to run for, to be a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear opening comments from Mr. Joey Dassinger.
Thank you. As he said, I'm Joey Dassinger. I have been in Clarksville for about seven years. I grew up in Alabama, where I attended Southeastern Bible College and graduated from there in 2011. I moved here, as I said, in 2013 with my wife, my two kids. And we've had one since we've moved here. And I decided to run for city council because I look at some of the things that we've been doing as a city, and this goes back a few years because I've run before, where we are giving money to businesses in ways that I don't think that we should, and are using other ways of overreach. So I've decided to run on a platform of limited government, fiscal responsibility, and individual liberty. I believe that we need to find ways to provide what services we do in a fiscally responsible manner, where we don't have to keep raising taxes. And in fact, I think we should be able to lower taxes. I didn't notice that in the proposed 2021 budget that we have a 5% decrease across the board, and I don't think we need to have a pandemic to be able to have that cut. We need to work for ways to save the taxpayer money every time, as much as we can, and also find ways that we can cut regulations so where we, as individuals, can live more free in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will have opening comments from Mr. Jason Knight.
Hello. My name's Jason Knight. I'm running for Ward 5 City Council. Ward 5 encompasses the tiny town, Peaches Mill and Ringgold areas. I am a Montgomery County Commissioner, and I am a three-time combat veteran with two tours to Iraq and one to Afghanistan. I've served nine years active duty here at Fort Campbell, Kentucky. And the rest of my time, I am currently in the reserves. I've done two company commands in the Army Reserves, and I'm actually, believe it or not, I'm up for promotion to major in the Army Reserves. For the county, I serve on the Jail and Juvenile Committee, the EMS Committee, the Library Board, and I'm chairman of the Animal Care and Control Committee. For the Tennessee County Services Administration, I also serve on the Education Committee. I have an associate's degree in industrial electronics, a bachelor's of science from Austin Peay State University, where I earned my commission. And I have an MBA in Information Systems Management, and I'm currently working on my dissertation for my PhD in Information Systems Management from North Central University. I am married to Mary Beth. I have, yeah, seven kids, and I love them all. And I am essentially the only candidate actively working with the street department to do something about the speeding within our residential neighborhoods. I've worked with the street department to have speed counters placed at North Henderson Way, Broad Ripple Drive, and parts of plantation estates. And I'd like to continue that effort, to complete that process, to enact speed reduction measures here within our community for the safety and security of our citizens and our children. And I'm Jason Knight. I'm running for Ward 5. Early voting is October 14th to the 29th. November 3rd is the general election. I would appreciate your support and your vote. Thank you.
And thank you to each of our candidates for your opening comments today. We will now turn to our panelists, who have a number of questions that they will provide. We will hear first from Mr. Jimmy Settle. And Ms. Eldridge, you will have the first response.
Ms. Eldridge, there are various capital projects on the table for the city and the county. The county's multipurpose events center accompanied by a city parking garage is an example. The city also has 300 acres for a family athletic complex someday. There's still talk of a downtown performing arts center. And progress is being made on a hotel and conference center with an office park near Exit 4. What is your stance on public projects like these? And if you like it, which one of these should get the priority?
Well, I like the Impact Center because we are so close to Nashville, and the residents of Clarksville seem to have to travel in order to have entertainment. And I feel that Clarksville can accommodate its own entertainment for the residents here. I would definitely have that Impact Center to go first. The 300 acres for the athletics center, actually, we sold some of our church property for that area, so I would like to see that come into the future so that we can accommodate for more AAU tournaments that go on in the area, so that the children don't have to travel so far.
Thank you. Mr. Dassinger.
I think that these projects, while they would provide things like entertainment for citizens here, they can also create a large tax burden on the city, and that can build up debt that will continue over the years. Looking at the budget, we have a lot of debt that we have to pay on. So I think that these projects are something that I believe should not be a priority as opposed to services to the community, and that we need to be able to manage things that we can afford to do now and not continue to put more debt on our taxpayers.
And Mr. Knight.
Well, I think all these projects are amazing, to be quite honest with you. We have a young population of individuals here within our community with a median age between 29 and 35. So we need all these things for our families to get out and do. Like I said, I have seven kids, so there's always things that I'd like to see done here within our community so that I can take my kids to. We have here the construction of the Impact, which was voted on by the county commission that I sit on currently. And I think that's a great idea because rather than having to travel all the way out to Nashville for an activity for your family, you can travel right here within your own backyard to see a show, or take your kids to Disney on Ice, or something to that effect. We also need good recreation centers and parks, and green areas and green space for our children, so we can go out there and play and have fun and enjoy ourselves as a family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next panelist will be Mr. Lee Erwin, and your question will go to Mr. Joey Dassinger.
Mr. Dassinger, a two-part question here, actually. What qualifies you for the office of City Council, Ward 5, and why should people vote for you?
What I would say would qualify me, and why people should vote for me, is just simply that I see the role of government as being one that should protect the rights of the people, and not to just, not to infringe on our rights as it has, and not to give us extra stuff that we want, because not everybody agrees on the extra stuff. The focus of the government needs to be to protect our rights to life, liberty, and property. And for, and I believe that I can be that voice to hold the principle and to make that a priority for our government.
Thank you. Mr. Jason Knight.
Well, there's no true qualification except an age requirement for any office and any citizen, based off of our constitution and the foundation that makes our nation a great one. You know, any individual that decides to run for office who's of age should run. However, I'm the only candidate actively working, as stated previously, with the street department to actually reduce the amount of speeders going through our residential neighborhoods. The consensus, based off of some of the polls that I've done and some of the in-person town halls where I've had hundreds of individuals attend, has been that we need to, one, do something to reduce the speeding, and, two, possibly in place some speed reduction measures, such as speed humps, signage, or chicanes. And this reason specifically is why you should vote for me, because I have actively been working to get something done about that, and I would appreciate your support come November 3rd. Thank you so much.
Ms. Eldridge.
Yes, thank you for the question. What qualifies me is that, for one thing, the Election Commission. I met all the qualifications to run. Why you should run for, why you should vote for me is because, you know, Mr. Knight said that he's working with the street department to control the speeding, but yet we still continue to have a speeding problem. Several people that I've encountered in my ward, constituents, have stated that they have been told that speed bumps could be installed. Speed bumps are really not an option, and the reason why they're not is because they slow emergency response vehicles. And if your child or you have only seconds to depend on a medical response to get in, then you don't want a speed bump. But there are traffic calm signage that works off of solar to remind people of their speed. And then also, we need to think about installing rubberized-style sidewalks to increase the safety of those pedestrians where there are none.
Thank you very much. Let's continue our questions. This one will come from Mr. Jay Alberta, and it will go to Mr. Knight for the first response.
Mr. Knight, there's a national topic going on regarding police departments, defunding police departments, and then setting up citizen review committees of police departments. What's your feeling on our city police department? Is it adequately funded? Should we, is there any danger of defunding? And what do you think about citizen review committees?
Well, that's a great question, as a matter of fact. I sit on the Jail and Juvenile Committee, as stated previously, and I know all too well the funding issues that our Sheriff's Department face. As a matter of fact, our city has an operational budget currently of about $100 million, with about $30 million going towards the Clarksville Police Department. I think with situations like that, we need more implementation of policies versus defunding of our police force. As a matter of fact, we look at some of these situations today and think that we are going through the exact same thing here within Clarksville, Montgomery County, but we're not. As a matter of fact, one online poll puts us at being within the 10% or top 10% of safest cities here within the entire U.S. So we're better than 90% of the cities within the entire United States, with about 1,000 violent crimes. But the issue that we have, that we face here within Clarksville, Montgomery County, is crimes against property. And I think bolstering our police force, funding our police force, and ensuring that they're well-trained is the important factor here versus defunding. Thank you.
Ms. Eldridge.
Yes, defunding is not an option. We have a shortage of manpower when it comes to our police department. And September, they just had a kind of like a screening test, and they'll have another one in December. We are going to have to get that communication and relationship between the citizens of the community, as well as the police department. Because I can remember when children used to say that they wanted to be a police officer or a fireman or what have you, and we have to bring those days back so that we can get the manpower for the shortage. I really think if we had more patrol officers, they probably need to patrol our communities more, just to ride through and just see what is going on, because those property crimes are occurring in the neighborhoods. And so we need those officers to drive through.
Mr. Dassinger.
I believe what we need to do is to find ways that we can make policy to get rid of some of the victimless crimes that our police currently go after, such as pulling people over for tinted windows and making drug busts and things such as that. And if we reduce, you know, our enforcement against these type of victimless crimes, as I call them, then we can focus on legitimate crimes, like the violent crimes and property crimes. And I also believe that there will be less negative interactions between police and the citizens. And I think this would be something we should try to move towards without having to wait on federal or state governments, try to do what we can at the city level.
Thank you very much. We come back to Mr. Jimmy Settle for the next question. That will go to Ms. Eldridge.
Okay, Ms. Eldridge, it seems like lately we've seen a lot of increased land use rezoning for new housing development in Clarksville and Montgomery County to accommodate predictions of growth. And everybody knows that we're growing, and everybody is hearing about where we're supposedly heading in terms of our growth. Some say that's out of control in terms of the rezoning that's going on. What do you say?
We need the housing. We definitely need housing. I, you know, we need to really, when we're developing these neighborhoods, instead of limiting access into the neighborhoods, if there's some way to join them with other established communities so that the traffic has more option to flow, just as on Peaches Mill, they have a development going up that's going to come in phases. Right now, there's no light there. I understand that there's going to be some traffic studies for it, but we need to guarantee that as our developments increase, that our infrastructure and our roadways, and that the timing of traffic lights and what have you are all set and tested and assessed so that we can move the traffic.
Mr. Dassinger.
Well, if we have people moving here at the rates that, you know, we're being told that they do, then we obviously need more housing, as she spoke about. And so what we need to do is, like, these rezoning should be allowed, and I believe in property rights, that, you know, if someone owns property, that they should be able to do what they see a need for. And I believe very strongly in the market, the free market, and that that's what should drive these sorts of things. And so as we have people moving here, we need to, you know, open affordable housing, open whatever housing is needed, based on who's moving here, and as well as, you know, we need to, you know, make improvements in, you know, look at the traffic situation. And that's one thing, as I mentioned earlier, like, why we should not prioritize the projects. We need to, you know, if we're going to have, traffic is something we have to deal with, and it's something where that money should go towards.
Thank you. And Mr. Knight.
That's a great question. I know, being on the county commission, we've done a lot of rezoning and had a lot of rezoning items on our agenda. We are a growing community. We have about 205,960 people here within Clarksville, Montgomery County. We're growing at an exponential rate. We've grown within the past couple of years at about 11,000 people. That's a lot of people. So we need places for them to stay. So having these developments go up is actually vital to ensuring that these individuals have places and homes to live in. The issue that we have is ensuring that we have smart, decisive, fiscally responsible growth as we continue to grow, and having jobs for individuals who are settling in here, so that they don't have to commute all the way down to Nashville in order to gain a job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee Erwin, you have the next question. It goes to Mr. Dassinger for the first answer.
Mr. Dassinger, now, funding is always a major concern for most government entities. So in your opinion, are the city departments adequately funded? And if not, what are the needs that you believe are not being addressed?
Yeah, I've looked, you know, as I was looking at some of the funding requests for the departments, you know, they mentioned, you know, we've got a 5% cut, but we're going to be trying to do what we can to fulfill our mission. So just, that's all I know that to base this on, is that, you know, they're going to be working to do what they have to do, even despite the 5% cuts that are across the board. So that's all I have to go by with that.
Mr. Knight.
Well, as I stated previously, the city has an operational budget of about $103 million, with about $30 million going towards our police force, about $13 million going towards our street department at the county level. 85%, about roughly 80% to 85% of our budget goes towards our schools, with the other county departments fighting for the remaining 10% to 15%. So I think if we are able to do something to allot towards our police department, I know we have some issues with funding with our EMS department, and just FYI, they're hiring, and they have a shortage. But I think we need to be able to adequately allocate funds more towards our first responders, to be quite honest with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Eldridge.
I would say the street department. And the reason why I say that is because of our local roads that we have within the city here. A lot of them need some expansion, some lanes, just even if it's just turning lanes. Also, we need sidewalks. When you see individuals that are attempting to catch the bus to go to employment, or the children who are attempting to walk to the bus stop, and there are no sidewalks for them to safely get there, I think we need money in those areas so that we can be the growing city that we are. And we have to not forget about those communities which are already paying taxes into this area. So I would say the street department for those reasons.
Thank you. Let's go next to Mr. Jay Alberta, and your question will go to Mr. Jason Knight.
Mr. Knight, almost daily, we hear of elected officials at all levels of government discussing issues related to ethical practices in their business, their offices, and their person, with their person. What is your position on the role of an elected official and the ethical standards that they should adhere to while they're in office?
I think if you are elected and the people chose you, you should be performing at your utmost 100% ethical mannerisms. That's pretty much it. I mean, that's it. Thank you.
And Ms. Eldridge.
If you're going to be a public servant to the people, you need to be very transparent. And you need to be present in those positions that you're elected to. Ethics is something that you need to go above and beyond to make sure that you're not even on the scope of not being ethical. You know, if you're that type of person, you don't need to run for public office, in my opinion.
And Mr. Dassinger.
Yeah, I agree with him. You do need to be beyond reproach on your ethical behavior. And, you know, I would say, based on the ordinances that were recently put forward about pushing for the taxpayers to pay for legal representation for city councilors, councilpeople for, you know, ethics violations, it doesn't show a good sign that you're pushing to be beyond reproach with your ethical standards. So we should be holding our elected officials accountable for those things and making sure that they are beyond reproach.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Alberta, I truly appreciate the question about ethics and the role of our public officials. Not only does every public official have a responsibility in that area, but we are, I might add, mutually and jointly accountable one to another. Let's go back to Mr. Jimmy Settle, if we can. Your question will go to Ms. Eldridge.
Okay, Ms. Eldridge, what role do you think the city council should play in economic development for the area? Are you happy, or at least in agreement, with the current approach to recruiting new industry and also retail businesses to our community?
I really think we need to bring in more blue-collar jobs, as well as white-collar jobs, so that the citizens can earn, and hopefully those companies that will come in here will allow the citizens to earn enough money that they can actually own a piece of the community as home buyers. So I think they are doing a great job at present. So I think they are doing a, a great job at present, but I, with the growing masses of our community population, we're definitely going to have to look at bringing in some more businesses.
Mr. Dassinger.
As I mentioned earlier, I'm a big fan of the free market, and I believe that the, the market is what needs to dictate what businesses come here, what, what factories come here and other things like that. We shouldn't be trying to incentivize with tax breaks or anything like that, or especially tax incentives to, to bring those, those companies here. Those companies should, should want to come here because, you know, we are a free market and thriving society here in Clarksville. And that is, those, those are the sorts of policies that I would want, want to be able to push, you know, coming in as for city council.
And Mr. Knight.
We are in a growing community. As I stated previously, our community is growing exponentially. It's going to be important for us to work with these economic development councils and industrial development boards in order to ensure that we're bringing in adequate jobs, whether it be white collar, blue collar, or what have you, into our community. This will help to alleviate some of the traffic issues that we have here on the I-24. I know the I-24 is slated to be widened, or at least being looked at, because I just came from the Legislative Liaison Committee here previously, I think about two days ago, where they discussed widening the I-24 from Clarksville to Nashville. Now, if an individual don't have to commute all the way out to Nashville for a particular job, then that, A, keeps tax dollars here within our community, B, brings that, that industry here within our community, makes them, those development boards, brings those white and blue collar jobs here, which will then increase our, our tax base.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lee Erwin, you have the next question, and it will go to Mr. Dassinger for the first response.
Mr. Dassinger, how do you propose to stay connected with the residents, let's say, of your ward as well as the city to help increase their involvement in the planning for the, for the city's future?
First of all, social media has been a, a big way over, over the past few years to, to stay connected with people. But also, also I think that going door-to-door with people and, and even holding town halls is a good way to really get personal with them. And, you know, I've, I've enjoyed being able to, to knock doors and, and talk to people, and, and they've been overjoyed to see people coming around as well, like, just to, you know, and I think that should continue beyond, you know, just elections time, that, that they see people who are representing them in that way.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Knight.
Well, if anybody knows who I am, they know I've conducted social media polls. I've done in-person polls. I've done town halls, several town halls, to include town halls that involved a multiplicity of topics, to include IEP and 504 Plan Town Halls to Traffic and Safety Town Halls. And I've had anywhere between 30, 40, 50, and 100 people come out to some of these town halls. And I will continue to do the exact same thing by providing you, the community, a voice to express yourself. Thank you.
Ms. Eldridge.
Thank you. You know, a mixture of social media and the door-to-door is ultimate to keep a connection with the constituents. I know when I was doing door knocking, there was a resident that, that said, "Oh, wow, I am very glad to see you." They said, "Everyone else is sending children." And so if we're going to be the public servants for the community, they need to actually know who we are and what we can do for them. I'm not a elected official at, at the moment, but I have still served my community and helped my constituents when they had difficulty with a situation at their home or residence. So, yeah. Stay in touch. Open door policy, that's very important.
Thank you very much. We have time for one more question, and that will come from Mr. Jay Alberta, and it will go to Mr. Jason Knight for the first response.
As we talk, there's a litany of questions that we have, but I think something that we all want to know, the candidates themselves. So I'm going to ask a question of you each personally. What do you think is your greatest accomplishment? And this does not include your children or your spouses, because we, we're all proud of those. But professionally, what is your greatest accomplishment?
Well, that's, that's a simple and difficult question at the same time, to be quite honest with you, because it's not just one. I have two professionally great accomplishments here within our community. The first is being able to draft legislation to send to the state for review to be hopefully turned into law as it relates to the IEP and 504 process. Now, for those that don't know what an IEP is, it's an individual education plan provided to children with disability, with disabilities. I have three children on the spectrum, and I drafted some legislation, spoke to two state legislators, and I've, I've taken input from the community. I've had hundreds of individuals contact me in regards to that piece of legislation. And my second greatest achievement is the fact that I've been working diligently, really hard with my community, with my constituents, in order to put a stop to the speeding within our residential neighborhoods and working with the Street Department to get speed counters placed at, like I said, North Henderson Way, Broad Ripple Drive, and parts of Plantation Estates. Thank you so much.
Ms. Eldridge.
Yes. My greatest accomplishment is probably surviving being the only girl of six children and having five older brothers. No, my greatest accomplishment, I would say, is serving in the United States Air Force. At the time when I went in, I had graduated high school, and I didn't think that I was ready to go to college. And once I had completed all of my training and was stationed at Nellis Air Force Base in Las Vegas, I soon began taking college courses. And as I look over my life and I see where all the things that I have achieved, I'm a homeowner here in Clarksville, Tennessee. I'm a small business owner, which I'm able to give back to those veterans that served our country and provide in home care services now to look out for them, for the sacrifices that they have made.
And Mr. Dassinger.
I think I would say just doing the daily grind. My, I've, I've been a blue collar worker since, you know, I graduated college, and just going through, just, you know, going to work every day and doing what I have to do to, to provide for my family. It, it's, it's not always easy, and it's, it's, it would be really easy to, to, it would have been really easy to give up at some times. But I think having, having, I mean, I know you said not, not, not your family, but, I mean, without having that, those people to, who depend on me to, to fall back on and to know that I need, they need me, it, it's been something that, over the span of the past 10 years, that I know that has been important, and I would say that would be.
Thank you very much. That concludes the questions from our panelists. We will now go to closing comments from our candidates. They will be provided in reverse order from their opening remarks. We will begin first with Mr. Jason Knight.
Well, thank you. Again, my name's Jason Knight. Again, last time, I am the only candidate actively working for you, actively working with the Street Department to ensure that we put an end to the speeding here within our residential neighborhoods. Allow me the opportunity to complete that process by electing me as your next city councilman for Ward Five. October 14th to the 29th is early voting. November 3rd is the general election. I'm Jason Knight. I hope to earn your vote and your support. Thank you so much.
Next, we have closing comments from Mr. Joey Dassinger.
So, obviously, I'm not a great orator. You know, I think you've seen that here today. And, but I, I do believe that in the principles that our country has been founded on, was founded on, liberty and justice for all, and that's what I want to fight for, for everybody here. It would be really easy just to, to, you know, stick, stay at home and, and, and try to get that for myself. But I believe that everybody deserves to have a voice for them, for these issues, for these principles. And I, I believe that's, that's where, where I, I stand apart. I, I'm not going to be voting for things to, to pander for people and/or to, you know, try to gain favors or anything. I believe that the, the principles that I, you know, that I, I spoke of before, limited government, fiscal responsibility, and individual liberty should be the first priorities of our, of our local government. And this is the voice that I want to bring for you. So vote for me, Joey Dassinger, November 3rd, and also during early voting.
Thank you very much. And next, we'll hear closing comments from Melissa Eldridge.
Once again, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and Leadership Clarksville for having us today. I would ask that you would take a look at those candidates who are already serving in office, and they tell you that they're working on speeding, but yet the speeding continues to occur in your neighborhood. You know, a few years ago, we had on the ballot consolidated government, and the citizens of Montgomery County as well as Clarksville voted that down. And so if you don't want the same old, same old, then I would ask that you take, pick Melissa Eldridge to be your next city councilperson for Ward Five. I'm a caring person by nature. I'm a retired physical therapist after 24 years. So even from my Air Force experience all the way, all the way up to present, and I'm 52 now, and I was 18 when I went into the Air Force, I have been taking care of people. And that is by nature that I am like that. I want to bring some fresh ideas to the council and to the city, some energy, efficient plans for installing rubberized sidewalks, which will be eco-friendly to our community, and as well as installing solar traffic com equipment that works off of solar. And, and these are low-cost interventions that can be put in place. So again, October the 14th through the 29th is early voting. I would ask that you would vote for Melissa Eldridge for City Council Ward Five. Thank you.
And I want to say thank you to each one of our candidates for sharing your time and your thoughts with us today. But as I like to do more than that, I want to say thank you for your willingness to serve in this office as an elected official on the Clarksville City Council Ward Number Five. So thank you each for being with us here today. As you've already heard from our candidates, once again, early voting will take place starting Wednesday, that's October the 14th, and that will run through Thursday, October the 29th. The location will be at the Election Commission Office there at 350 Pageant Lane, Suite 404. And I also want to say thank you to our panelists, Mr. Jimmy Settle, Mr. Lee Erwin, and Mr. Jay Alberta. Gentlemen, thank you very much, and thanks to our timekeeper, Mr. Phil Harpell. Thanks also to the staff here at the Customs House Museum and Cultural Center for hosting today's forum. And thanks also to Leadership Clarksville, your Clarksville Area Chamber of Commerce, and to Rick Goodwin Productions for making this forum possible. Once again, we urge you to get out either through early voting or on November the 3rd and vote for the candidate of your choice. Until next time, I'm Van Stok saying thank you for watching.